I don't want it, it's too much work. But some guys are good at it.
And the first time I went there, you put money down in that damn door, it took a dump. You know, rather than race, it took a dump. And I said, "That was the end of my way to racing."
Meetings and agendas were posted and furnished to all news media and persons requesting that notification. Executive session, public body may hold a meeting close to the public for one or more following reasons: discussion of negotiations, incident to propose contract arrangements, and proposed purchase or sale of property; the receipt of legal advice with the legal advice related to pending, threatened, or potential claim or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege; settlement of legal claims or the position of the public agency and other adversary situations involving the assertion against the agency of a claim; proposed lease purchase agreement for fire apparatus; lease agreement ending in J2; tax map ending in 008 and 009; also discussion of matters relating to the proposed location expansion of the provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by a public body; prospect update; project refurb. At this time, we'll call for a motion to go into executive session, please.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and at this time, we'll go into executive session. This time, we'll call for a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved that we come out of executive session.
We have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, if y'all would, please stand for the pledge of allegiance, followed by the invocation by Pastor Atkins.
Our pledge is allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You might say, "My prayer, but, oh most holy and righteous God, we come before you one more time, humbly as we know how. And Father God, we just want to tell you thank you how you watch over us last night. Allow us to rule this morning in our right mind, able to move our active limb one more time. And so, we want to tell you thank you. And we also want to tell you thank you for the rain. We all want to tell you thank you for all of these are your people. And Father God, as we, Father God, in this committee, Father God, go through what we need to go through tonight, Father God. We ask for you to govern us according, Father God. Bless us to be wisely in our decision, Father God, and as you allow each and every one that come before us, Father God. Father God, we ask you to bless them. Having it all been said and done, Father God, we ask you, Father God, allow us to go back home, Father God, to a place that you have blessed with, Father God, and give us travel and mercy. And we ask all the many blessings in your son Jesus' name. Let everybody say amen."
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Atkins. I'd like to welcome everyone this evening to our council meeting. It's good to have a room full and hope you enjoy what we're doing. We've got a good bit of work to talk about on our agenda, so welcome and thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules to be a part. At this time, we'll call for approval of the consent agenda items.
I'd like to make a motion to remove nineteen and twenty from the consent agenda and table.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And now, for approval of our agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Motion carries. And at this time, we will recognize Mr. Smithy Kula, presentation to council of Old House strategic plan and grant match request. Welcome, Mr. Kula.
Good to see you. Mr. January, I sent a letter out to staff who, by the way, have been a little supportive, particularly when they're serving as a business officer.
Mr. Mike Long, Smithy.
There we go. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Back in December, I sent a letter to council and about the, this potential site project for Old House. And in that process, it's been Kim Burgess and Andy and so forth have been very supportive and very helpful, gone above and beyond. But I want to get into the heart of an unusual project. First of all, I want to talk about what's happened so far. We know you need to see something happening, see something going on with your funding. But going back to the letter for just a minute, Jasper County 250 Committee is requesting forty-eight thousand dollars from Jasper County tonight as part of a larger cost-sharing grant in coordination with the South Carolina 250 Commission for the development of the Old House, Tomb of Thomas Hayward site, into a historical park and interpretive center for the citizens of Jasper County and its visitors. The Jasper County 250 Committee is preparing to apply for the state's 250 Commission's American Revolution Planning Development Renovation Site Grant for the development and further preservation of the Old House, Tomb of Thomas Hayward site located in the Hamlet of Old House. In terms of potential funding, this state grant is open-ended. It's also quite competitive, and the deadline is coming up on March twenty-sixth. To be eligible for the grant, this SC 250 Commission is officially requiring that Jasper County contribute at least twenty percent to the total cost of this project. However, they've strongly advised us to go further. And so, we've asked, the cost share tonight is in the, to the tune of about thirty percent of the total project estimate, detailed on the next page, from that letter, which I'll go over in just a second. I'm not sure if it's in the PowerPoint. Could y'all help me with that? Okay, well, you have it in your packet, of course. Okay, great. Okay, that would be great for just a minute. Lisa, thank you. After several months, the Jasper County 250 Committee, after several months of assessment, I should say, we deem the Old House site to be the most significant historical site in Jasper County and has great potential for development into a history park and becoming a significant draw for cultural tourists. Further, we think this effort will better protect, preserve, and catalog this site for the present as well as the future. The Old House site is, of course, the birthplace and burial place of Thomas Hayward Jr., a sign of the Declaration of Independence and patriot leader during the American Revolution. In addition, the site offers a unique and valuable and irreplaceable opportunity to preserve, study, and document the remains of a plantation house and associated outbuildings, but also the remains of a mill, production, and shipping facilities, and rice fields. It's also the potential to further educate and understand the life of the enslaved on a rice plantation, the impact of the Proust invasion on what is now Jasper County, and the significance of Old House as the epicenter of the extraordinarily patriotic U-Haw neighborhood. Okay? Finally, I think it should be prepared and enhanced as soon as possible to serve as the epicenter, the centerpiece, if you will, for the commemoration, the two-hundred-fiftieth commemoration of the American Revolution in Jasper County. All right? If we look to the, up on the, in your handout, you should have a breakdown. The basics for this project starts with an archaeological dig, which I'm going to go into a little further in the presentation in just a minute. But obviously, that's the biggest cost line item for this project. Yes, there have been some partial digs done out there in the past, going all the way back to nineteen eighty. We had the Shakora Foundation did a dig there in nineteen ninety-six, but they were not extensive digs, and a lot of area out there was not uncovered and studied and, of course, documented. But let me go through this real quick, and we can, of course, address questions about what these line items mean in just a minute. But an archaeological dig is important, but also the assessment. What are we going to do with that information? How are we going to benefit the citizens of Jasper County and their visitors? And how are we going to make this a strong, attractive draw for our passersby coming down ninety-five and so forth? Other areas have done a tremendous job drawing people into their area. Historical tourism is off the charts in a big way right now, in terms of numbers, dollars spent, and so forth, particularly as we have a population ages and has more time to do that sort of thing. Okay? But if we go down, we see the archaeological dig being the biggest piece here. Title abstract work, landscape, architectural planning, and assessment and so forth is very important for a variety of uses. Professional repair maintenance of the cemetery, some of the physical structure that's there now, trimming and bracing of the live oaks that we believe were planted in the seventeen forties, well before the American Revolution. We have a lot of site prep that just needed to be done. That's pretty straightforward. We have landscaping. Let me say something about the landscaping. Landscape is important because it's just not landscaping. It's going to be a screening project, which will physically separate the residences out there from the park itself, from the site itself, making it look like it's, you know, it's in and of itself, giving both the residents that are there now privacy as well as a sort of isolation as for the site itself. Interpretive signs, this is incredibly important. Across there, we'll have interpretive signs, which will talk about not only the Thomas Hayward aspect of it, the rice plantation, the experience of enslaved people, Native Americans, the underserved, the unknown will be documented as a part of these interpretive signs. Okay? We also want to get out into probably the bigger area, we'll see in a minute, the less well-known, and that is the, in the marsh where the mill and other things occurred. There's a larger area there and much more to be documented and unearthed as a part of this project. So marsh boardwalk comes into big play, and that will be further in other phases later on, more could be done with that. And then, of course, site entrance enhancements. We know that the site is in a state of, you know, it's in a decrepit state and needs to be enhanced quickly. So we, we'll talk about, a little bit more about a quick facelift that we're going to be able to do here very soon. But again, that's the idea of basic things like improving the entrance. We, one of our committee members has met with DOT, obviously, there's some entrance issues for things like buses, the potential for, you know, a lot more visitation and so forth will be needed to, and just to enhance and improve the cosmetics of the entrance itself. Total cost of the project, one hundred sixty thousand dollars. Again, it's a forty-eight thousand dollar ask for the cost share. Let's move further into the presentation about, you know, the basics and building this from the ground up. Again, it is an investment in history. It's an investment in cultural tourism. It's an investment in our, in our children, to educate them on this area, on this important site, as well as how it ties into other sites. Okay? Go to the next page. This map on here, I'm not sure where you can see it. This is a map from the South Carolina Parks Service that was done many years ago, but on it, it has some things that were found, have been documented on the site, much of which, as I said, are in the marsh. You can see the dots here, this is an outline of the Avenue of Oaks on your picture here on the map that you should have in your packet. But there's some important things to remember. As it says on the, on the screen, recently uncovered, in the archives of Jasper County Historical Society, a partial map, and of course, a lot of work was, a lot of great work was done back then, and of course, this, this, as people passed on and things changed, that work was sort of forgotten about. But a lot of that can be tapped on and built upon, and is very helpful to us already in getting a feel for the site and how important it was. I have to say personally, I was blown away. The more we found out about the site and studied the site, I said, "This is incredible." It ties right into the larger theme we want for Jasper County. The theme was the Proust invasion, a British officer who marched across from Savannah into Purysburg and basically created a massive amount of upheaval across the whole area, which we now know as Jasper County. And that also created the need for the occurrence, we call the Battle of Purysburg, and the encampment at Old House, which has never been, a dig and study has never been done, as well as the Battle of Cusahatchie. Okay? That was, and that was in the late seventeen seventies. Okay? Prior to that, this area was more about a civil war essentially between lolit, British lolists, and local patriots. Okay? And, and of course, as we know, Cornwallis attempted to come into, into this area and march upward underneath the mid-Atlantic, and the South Carolina effort, the North Carolina effort, of course, helped stymie that effort. The previous digs that were done, as we'll get into just, in just a minute, again unearthed some real treasures that can be developed and built on, but that's why we're trying to start from the ground up with the archaeological dig and assessment, as well as the title abstract. And by the way, I said I wouldn't get into that night, technically speaking, but a title abstract's important because it gives you the history of the land, going way back to the beginning, as far as we can go back. It also tells you, you know, why is it important, what was there, as opposed to say something that's just a few decades old. All right, let's go to the next slide, please, Lisa. I want to emphasize that at that, at the site, no archaeological metal detecting of the site has ever been performed, no ground penetrating radar has ever been performed as well. And so, these are very critical because if we're going to, we need more parking there, more turnaround space for, for example, for school buses and tour buses, and we don't have that now. But before we can do anything like that, including even doing a survey, we want to make sure that we know what's under the, under the earth. Okay? Very important. And we suspect that there are things that are on adjacent private properties that will also be important as well, if we can get, if we can get further cooperation. And we've done a lot of, spent a lot of time pre-work. We've talked with the landowners around it, who've been very excited and cooperative about the project, which will be important, because some of the things from this site are on their property. Okay? Now, we brought out, a couple of months ago, we brought Dan and Rita Elliott, local archaeologists from the Lamar Institute, who did the Purysburg dig a few years ago and wrote extensively about Purysburg, Battle of Purysburg and so forth. And they, they, one of the interesting things I took from it was the site was so pristine, they found pottery shards laying out on the open surface of the ground. Okay? So the site is essentially, you know, you know, very, in very good shape for this. However, let's go to the next, let's go to the next slide if we could. One more, please. You can see that interesting part here is fortunately Jasper County owns the most important historic portion of these land, former lands of Daniel Hayward, the father of Thomas Hayward. Out of the original four-hundred acre land grant given to Daniel Hayward, only the small blue section, the Old House plantation, has remained untouched essentially and unchanged since the eighteen hundreds. Jasper County's required stewardship to protect and enhance this valuable asset cannot be understood. You know, when I go out and talk to people, and I'm sure that some of my committee members tonight have had the same experience, they say, "You have a sign of the Declaration of Independence from your county?" Oh, yes, we do. And they are enamored with that. "What are you doing?" Well, and then people come and visit. We were out the other day, and there was a descendant of a Hayward, Hayward descendant out there visiting from Columbia, I think, and he was amazed that this was here, and it was also disappointing at the same time that more had not been done with the site. You know, that the signs are, you can't really read them too much anymore. The, the only thing that's really, really a, something to see, if you will, a physical remnant is the cemetery itself. But nevertheless, we're, we're planning to do something about all that. Let's go to the next, we'll go to the next. We obviously, again, going back to the survey, don't want to do a physical survey with flags and all that, because we're afraid that it's going to draw too, attention too early to the site from some of our friends in the metal detecting world and so forth. So we're kind of waiting, waiting, waiting until we can move all at once. I'm going to move to the page, which, I think it's one more here, yeah, Why Tourism Matters. You know, Jasper County is unique in that particular area. As I see, you've heard me say before, the U-Haw district, which runs from Granville to Cusahatchie and back down to Chelsea, is an incredibly historical area, and it has great importance to the founding of our country, and certainly the founding of this area. So we have in this area, we're, we're focused on the Revolutionary period, of course, but we have right in such a short proximity, Honey Hill. We have Granville as a colonial town site, village site, it moved up into the early Anabellum period as well. And all of this, the more you dig into it again, the more important this area was in terms of the founding of this area and the founding of this country. We also know, as I said earlier, historical tourism brings in more dollars than any other type of tourism, and we have the potential to invest in this site. Areas in, I think it's Greenwood, right, Milton? Get Milton started. That's one of the favorite things he likes to talk about is, up in the upper part of the state, much further away from a major road artery like I-95, they've done incredible things by just enhancing, recognizing, promoting their sites. And again, as we said, we'll go to the next page, please. As we said, the first step starts with the archaeological dig and assessment and, you know, title abstract work. And we'll finish up with, thank you. We appreciate your time and attention to this matter and hope you will consider this forty-eight thousand dollar cost share request, so we can get this development show on the road. Let me back up for just a minute, though I should have done this earlier, and just give you an update real quick on what we've done. Okay? Linda, if you and Kathy will help me out, I'll just let you go right into it, rather than going through this whole sheet here.
We have applied for a number of grants. We have been awarded several grants that will cover four historical interpretive signs at Purysburg, four historical interpretive signs at Thomas Hayward, as well as national, a national historic marker at the Hayward plantation, and a South Carolina historical marker at the Cusahatchie site. And all those, we are now in the process of developing the content and working it out. We will see those in place, in the ground, ready for public viewing, probably late summer, early fall.
So, yeah. So while I was doing the, the research in the Jasper County Historical Society archives, I found a wealth of information. We had such a strong historical society back then, and I found boxes and boxes that has helped us develop this site. It has also helped with the Honey Hill. Jasper County is poised to bring in a lot of tourism between the 250 and Honey Hill, which we're doing a lot of work at right now. So we just want to get everybody here, so that they can see the, the natural beauty that we have in the historical sites that we have.
I think the total dollars that are in the account, in Kim's account officially, are, it looks like sixty thousand, okay? That's a pretty good start. That's where we are, because we want you to see things are happening. We've worked very hard on this, spent a lot of time on this, late at night, doing these, these site grants, which are not easy, these general grants, we have more to come. We're planning on this larger grant, which is going to be extremely difficult, there's a lot of legwork. We've done some of it, we have a lot more to go, and we have a lesser, one lesser grant that, but let me say this real quick, and I'll wrap it up. If I forget anything, tell me. I know I've taken more time than I should have. But this is important to the area. I want everybody in the public to hear that. This is, this is the type of development that Jasper County needs. This is something special. By what, by fate or by chance, we have right now at our disposal to enhance, develop, and preserve for our children, for us, for our visitors. Okay? And not only that, it's going to bring in dollars, which we know is good for the county, good for everybody, right? So I think, I hope you'll get behind this. We plan to, we are committed to this, a very committed group here, small but committed. And we hope to add to this group, workers, you know, doers, as we go along. But I, we have my commitment tonight, that we're going to see this through, because, because one of the things that people are always concerned about is, how do we take care of this going forward? We're going to do all these nice things, but it must be taken care of long-term. Because, so I said, if the worst thing we do is create permanent markers in recognition of these areas, that'll be a good day. We want to do a lot more. We want this to be one of the, because when I brought the site, I said, "Well, let's, let's go to the horse's mouth before we do all this work on these grants." I talked to the state people, and I said, "Come down and visit the site with us. I want you to see and tell us what you think about it. What's the viability of us doing all this work, and, and particularly with a site like Old House and Tomb of Thomas Hayward?" And they were, they were blown away. And they were, they were blown away. Not only with the Thomas Hayward site, but Purysburg and Cusahatchie as well, the potential that was there. And, and of course, that was very encouraging, and they gave us a lot of ideas because I, because then we want to be able to go back to those people that helped in the approval process, be on, on the right side of what they're looking for in this, in this search for, for funding. And, and just general approval. Um, again, thanks for all your time and listening. Um, anything else we missed? Any questions about the project?
Any questions, Mr. Kemp?
No.
Pastor Atkins?
No.
Mr. Garbade?
No.
Mr. Clark? I, uh, Mr. Kula, I'll, first of all, just want to say thank you to you and your entire group and organization. What a, I mean, these, these are volunteers, and they have poured their heart and soul into this project, and have spent hours upon hours, uh, requesting grants, uh, and, and talking to the state historical society, and y'all have done a phenomenal job. I know a lot of work's going into it, and I just want to say thank you. As a, a local boy growing up here, I remember, I think it was in the first or second grade when I was going to Thomas Hayward Academy, uh, we had a field trip to, to, uh, Thomas Hayward's grave. And I, we were studying history and the, uh, Declaration of Independence and everything, and we went out there, and I was blown away as a young child. I'm like, "Wow, this is pretty cool." And nobody knows about it. Um, and I think this is a, a great, great thing, and it's got a lot of benefits, not only to our kids to learn and grow, but people who come here and pass through, and, uh, the historical tourism is, is an important thing. So history will teach all of us a lot. So, um, just thank you for what you're doing, and we will, um, take this into consideration. Obviously, uh, we got to look at the budget.
Right.
Um, but this is something that, that I would definitely be in favor of, for sure. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, council members.
Thank y'all. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I just have about a couple?
Oh, Mr. Milton, you know you could.
I want to just emphasize to the council, the scope of what Thomas Hayward's tomb and what the 250 Commission is doing along with the Honey Hill Battlefield Site. It is phenomenal. They complement each other. Natural, the Revolutionary was before the Civil War, but right through those earthworks is a part of the Charleston stage to Savannah stagecoach trail that George Washington, the original roadbed is still there, that George Washington passed through there in the stagecoach when he became president and toured the south. So that's just another little bit of history there. And Smedea alluded to Greenville. It's actually the community of '96, smaller than Ridgeland, over 25 miles from the nearest interstate in the Boondocks in 2021, according to the survey. Using the tourism formula, they generated over 1.5 million dollars in a, a tax money for that little community. We have tens of thousands of vehicles driving through the city limits of Ridgeland per day. We believe that that number can grow and grow and grow to two, three, four million dollars a year from tourism that Smedea referenced, and emphasized that the value of these projects, and folks, the interest from the people, not only locally, but it goes all the way to Washington. We've got people from Washington with the National Park Service that is now living in this community, and they own boards, or advisory boards, that are directly impacting what is happening. So they're bringing a lot of money to this county that we're not having to go before you folks and ask for because they're getting it out of Washington for us. And we're grateful for that, and thank y'all for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Milton. Next, we have a very, very special guest, our own Senator Margy Bright Matthews is with us.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Senator, welcome. It's a pleasure to have you with us.
Thank you. It's good being here.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, thank you again for allowing me to be on the agenda.
Glad to have you.
Um, I think the only one I haven't met is Councilman Garbade. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Kemp, and Mr. Atkins, and Ms. Clark. Um, I, the only reason why I wanted to, um, come before you, um, is I really intended to come before I went into session, but we got a little busy there with different conferences at the end of the year. Um, as most of you know, after the death of Senator Leatherman, who was over finance, Senator Peeler took over, and of course, he has a different office, um, procedure on how, um, funds are appropriated in our projects. And so I thought it was important because Jasper's never had that problem, thanks, thanks to, um, Andy Fulgham, who comes to me directly and gets the lay of the land. So I want to commend you for that. I've actually sent some of my other counties over to him and say, "You need to go copy off of his paper." Because, um, it, it's important that under Senator Peeler, first, that there are certain procedures you have to follow. Um, and so I wanted to share that with you in person. I've done the same thing in talking with the folks in Hampton and, um, Colleton. I'm actually supposed to be in Colleton tomorrow, um, to talk with them, and I've shared this. Um, I know that you also have an opportunity to present any financial requests that Jasper County might have to the House, and I encourage you to do that. But unfortunately, and this is why it's important to come now, is because if you haven't presented your financial ask to the state of South Carolina, to the House, it's too late. Because the House will finish its floor, everything is in committee there, they're on a different schedule than us. The House has to start the budget, the Senate then has to re, um, after they've finished their floor debate and approved the budget, then it comes across, it's a couple of weeks lag, then it comes across the hall to us. So the reason why I'm here is in the event Jasper or any communities out there has not submitted its request, you have until the end of February to do so. I'm going to hand up to you, and I want it to hand it up after I finish so that you would first, um, would have this to review. If you would like to obtain funding from the state through the state appropriations process, I'd like for you to please present it to my office through the Community Investment for the 2024 budgeting cycle. Um, again, you have to get it in by the 24th. Now, this is the important part. Before, you could just send me a letter and say, "I want to get this park," or "I want to get, um, funding for water," and I'd try to put you into infrastructure and, and pigeonholed it. Now Senator, um, Peeler's office requires that you name the project, you put the exact amount, the name of the organization that's going to be receiving the funds, the type of request. It could either be municipal, nonprofit, private organization, or any park you have. Point of contact, and trust me, my experiences is that they had, their staff has been following up and contacting folk, and the other information, like website and email. Um, as you know, there's been a lot of talk about special interest projects, um, where there have been investigations, so, to making sure that they don't tie back to individuals, 501(c)(3)'s, or municipalities, or, um, what these are for. We want to make sure everything is as transparent as possible. Um, the last part of it is, and this is important, the activity function of project for which is earmarked is intended. You have to put why you need this money and what is the community buyback? What are the benefits? I always say, put in the project's budget. In other words, plan for the future so the state will know whether or not you're going to start and whether it will be finished. Then you have to demonstrate a community support for it, not just a pigeonhole project. Um, and the last thing is details of any state funds previously appropriated to the same entity for the same purpose. In other words, did we give y'all money for this before? And if so, what did you do with it? And where is this project? I'm going to hand up at this time, uh, folders for each of you. It has those projects. I know you get contact, uh, contacts from different people in the community, um, or different organizations that say, "Hey, we need money. We need this." Trust me, and I mean this sincerely, I don't think, uh, with the exception of Councilman Garbade, I don't think any of you up here, um, I think all of you know how to reach me, and you know you can contact me, usually early in the morning or late in the evening, by cell. Talk to me directly. It's important that I know what's going on and know the backstory on a lot of your projects, and just that it does not, that I just don't get it dropped on me at the last minute. But you know why? Don't go through, um, just come straight to me because I need to know how important it is to you. Because guess what? Senator Peeler's going to say, "Now, Margy, what's your priority?" He likes the personal touch, and I like that, too. I have to rank it, and I want to be able to do it based upon my gut. And you and I both know, all, all of us are politicians, but we all have instincts of what's right and what's wrong and what's best. And so I have, before I start, I'm getting a lot of pickleball court requests out of certain areas. That seems to be the phase now. But let me know what is important to you. Okay? And to Jasper County, and let me be able to see that there's a future there. And if you get it to me by the end of February, if we need to go into the first of March, because mind you, the House isn't going to be finished until the 12th, the weekend, the week of the 12th, that'll give me some time to go through it because I have to put it in an organized form and list. Okay? Are there any questions?
Senator, I don't, I don't have any questions, and, and I do appreciate the, your generosity and, and help with trying to help us with some funding for certain projects, but, and I know you know this, but I got to say it, our roads in Jasper County are unbelievable.
Deplorable.
And I met with our commissioner last week. I know you know Mr. Barnwell Fishburne well.
Neighbor?
He showed me the schedule that the 462 is supposed to start in a couple of months and be finished by November. And that's just, um, that's, that was supposed to happen last year. Um, so, um, I've been wearing them out. I know they probably get goosebumps when they see my name pop up on their phone, but uh, 278 north of Ridgeland coming past Palmetto Electric up to Hampton, it, you can't even drive the speed limit. And then the Road 17 from, uh, south out of Ridgeland to Hardyville, it, it, you can't even drive 45. It, it is so bad.
The biggest?
And we can't get any help. And we need help because our, our phones blow up, we get emails, and, you know, I tell everybody, "Hey, it's the state roads. You need to talk to our delegation because that's what we're doing," but we're not getting anything out of Columbia. Our roads are bad.
I'm on the Department of Transporta- I'm on the Transportation Committee, and that's the number one complaint. And what you're complaining about? Yeah, everybody. All across the state because South Carolina waited so long. Um, can you hand those up to, but thank you. Um, South Car- because I want to make sure y'all can a- ask any questions if you have them. Um, South Carolina waited so long to fund the infrastructure that it needed to, to repair these roads, to expand 95. They waited so long to do it, and in so doing, guess what? Once we finally funded it, we didn't have the workers to do the work.
Yeah.
And the appropriations, it took some time to, um, for that. I'm not giving any excuses. They haven't given us any excuses. They've told us the truth. We are doing it as fast as we can because we, I, I get numerous complaints on, all the way down 95, and on 17, I get 278, 462, you name it.
170.
And, and, and the poor, um, county transportation committees. The funds are there, but it's okay for you to give them a order to do a road, but if they're 10 behind and they don't have any more workers, what do you do?
Yeah. Well, I don't know if maybe we can have, uh, a heads up when the delegation meets and, and meet with our council to talk about some of the roads in Jasper County, but we need to try to work better together between the delegation and our council, and the Transportation Committee to formulate a plan, because these three roads in particular, uh, it's an embarrassment.
Um, Representative, I think a meeting would do great, but I'm going to be telling you the truth when I tell you that as it relates to Barnwell, as it relates to Christie Hall, who's retiring, um, Alan Hutto, all of the commissioners, we, uh, they are inundated with the same problem. And I usually pepper them with questions when they come before us, and we hear the same thing. The delegation is in, because Herb Kressman has been complaining about, um, 278, and so has Tom Davis. And it's still in that situation. We're willing to get together and write a letter, um, meet with, um, uh, the gentleman who's supposed to be taking over. Um, I was supposed to meet, met with him last week, but I'm willing to do whatever I can to try to get them to put this to a priority.
Well, I, I appreciate that because we really, I mean, all we can do is, you know, usually the squeaky wheel gets the grease, but we don't get much grease.
You realize how much I had to yell and scream to get them? Because when I got in the Senate, um, we were in, on the, we weren't on the 10-year plan that the State Department of Transportation has as it relates to expanding I-95.
Yeah.
When we got Barnwell on there, and Robbie Robbins was on there, and some of the other guys, then we were able to get 95 on, and the Low Country, on the 10-year plan. Because before that, the only thing they were worrying about is getting people back and forth to Michelin and BMW and Malfunction Junction.
Yeah, I agree. All the money goes to Greenville and Charleston and Columbia.
All of the projects were up there, and at least now we have four of the 10.
Well, any, any help would be appreciated, uh, Councilman Kemp.
I just have a suggestion, and it's just, is maybe somebody in the Low Country, I don't know who are, is on the commission, maybe from, somebody from the Low Country like Hampton, Jasper, or Colleton, go on the board and be a voice. I think sometimes we lose.
That is the voice, Barnwell Fishburne. He is, you have it, it's done according to congressional regions. Um, you have Alan Hutto, and you have Barnwell Fishburne. Barnwell is from Colleton County.
Okay.
Um, and he is probably the newest one for this area. And Barnwell, he's really good about calling me and telling me about how stressed he is about the situation.
I've called some of that.
I would like to see something from Jasper, really.
That would be.
We need it.
Well, well, you realize now, who, um, the first congressional district, I need to see who that person, is that Hutto? I would have to look at the, um, the, the list.
Barnwell would be the sixth congressional district.
He's sixth, so that's only a portion.
Right.
But, um, the first is mostly Jasper. That's who your representative, and we can look and see. I'd be glad to talk, look at it, and I'll give you a call, Mr. Kemp, to let you know. No, I'll let you know who it is and when their appointment time is up, and then that's up, maybe that's something we can work on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Matthews.
Any other?
Appreciate all your help.
It's all right. We had the South Carolina DOT down here in Columbia.
Now, wait a minute. You said who?
We had the South Carolina DOT.
No, Matthews.
Down here.
Uh-huh.
They came down here to a meeting we had several months ago.
Mm-hmm.
And their biggest thing is they didn't have any money. Well, we do know, and you probably know the best figures that we got, but we got grants from the federal government doing the tile for the code. And that was millions and millions and millions of dollars for infrastructure.
Infrastructure, that's, yeah.
And, and it was going to redo bridges, it was going to redo roads and stuff, and all that money went toward Greenville, and it went toward Myrtle Beach, and it went toward a big town. And they said that they were out of money, that they couldn't do nothing down here because they were out of money.
I think you, on the, um, and, and you correct me, Mr. Fulgham, if I'm wrong, or, um, Mr. Chair, um, that money had to be requested, um, and it was, I thought, requested by all of the counties in the Low Country. The, um, what was it called? What's that, um, special money for infrastructure? It's the second round of money where there was, um, four billion for the, it's, it's an acronym, and I can't remember what it is. It is, huh?
ARPA.
ARPA. There you go. Thank you. Thank you. The ARPA, the second round of ARPA money, that was done according to counties, and if you received some in the first round, all you had to do was apply to get the monies in the second round. And that was supposed to be appropriated according to what you had received in the first round. And I thought, I don't know if any of my counties, that did not.
I don't think we got any of it. I really don't. I don't think.
You would know better than myself.
We got very little of that money.
Did y'all apply for it?
I think we did through the lines.
Through, okay. I'll check, because in that, you had a certain window to apply for those funds.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
We, I just want to say this. A lot of the people, the constituents, they get angry and upset with the council when we say to them, that's a state-funded road. And many of you right now, going up and down 17, headed to Savannah, it took lats, 15 years to get that money that we're using on 17. All of us, we didn't, all of the counties, we didn't spend our money. We saved it until we got enough. When we first started out, it was $19,000 to do the road. Then we ended up, it was like 68 million to do the road.
Right.
So we're trying. You may not see, I don't realize it, but we're trying. And we do contact the people from the state. I talk to Senator Bright often, trying to see what can we get. But the roads are bad, and it's down on the southern end to 170. Oh, my God, that road is so bad, I don't drive on it at night, because I'm afraid I'm gonna hit a hole and it's gonna put me in the ditch. It's all over, all over. So we thank you for whatever you can do for us.
We're trying, but I do have one suggestion. I was thinking about what your chair was saying. When has Jasper set its day to be at the Capitol?
The State House Day?
Yes.
We have, and that's through our Chamber of Commerce.
24th of March.
If, if I can have, is it the 24th of March? If I can have a liaison with you all?
There'll be plenty of us there.
My point is, if maybe before we actually, we could meet with Department of Transportation and the delegation members, because all of us make sure that we're there for you all, and maybe if we have a meeting, a roundtable with them then.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you.
What about that?
I'm sorry, the 27th of March, 27th.
Okay. We'll do a meeting then. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Next, Mr. David Tetter. Consideration of Resolution R-2024-03, Amending the Employment Agreement Between Jasper County and Andrew P. Fulgham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council, thank you. I'm glad to be here. This is a ratification resolution. Council took action on June, January 25th at a meeting to increase the salary, the base salary of Mr. Fulgham as part of an annual review. The last change was two years ago. You, I wasn't there, but y'all did an evaluation and chose the number that you see in here to take it to 170,000. He has a written contract, so when you amend and change those things, there's an amendment to the contract that needs to be authorized. This authorizes you, Mr. Chairman, to sign the amendment to the contract that incorporates that one basic sentence that you see in this resolution.
Thank you. Before we go.
Before, next bathroom.
I guess we can use that. Okay. So at this time, we'll call for a motion for amending the employment agreement between the county and Andrew P. Fulgham.
I make a motion that we do an amendment to amend the employment agreement between the county administrator, Mr. Andrew Fulgham.
Motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next, Ms. Kimberly Burgess. Consideration of Resolution R-2024-04, To Provide Preliminary Authorization For the Funding of Jasper County Fire Rescue Pumper Trucks And Capital Improvements For the Pratt Memorial Library, To Declare the Intent of County Council To Reimburse Jasper County For Expenditures Related To the Jasper County Fire Rescue Pumper Trucks And Capital Improvements For the Pratt Memorial Library From Proceeds Of ATAX Exempt Obligations To Authorize The County Staff Proceed With Structuring The Financing For Jasper County Fire Rescue Pumper Trucks And Capital Improvements For The Pratt Memorial Library And To Provide For Other Matters Related There Too.
Thank you, Chairman Salz, members of council. A few, a couple of meetings ago, the council approved the purchase of 11 pumpers, new pumpers, which would be, we're estimating it would be approximately $10,800,000 with all the equipment and other, other items that need to be purchased. And at the time, when you approved it, it was pursuant to financing. And we have, are still in the process of evaluating the financing, but we wanted to move forward with the actual purchase and commitment for the, for the purchase of the pumpers. And at the same time, we know that there is going to be some, some cost associated with the outfit and the Pratt Memorial Library, the recon, not the reconstruction, but the remodeling of it, that are greater than the $3 million that we have set aside in the, from the ARPA funds. So we thought that we would also include an amount to equal approximately 2.9 million that, for that additional construction. And this resolution essentially will allow us to move forward with that, with the purchase, and continue to look at different financing options. And when we have those available and ready, we can bring that back to you, whether that's a bond issuance, a bond anticipation note, or lease, or some other financing means.
Any questions from council?
It's gonna be either a lease or so. Why, what does that effect have on the library? If you don't lease, then you don't need the bond, correct?
Well, it wouldn't be a lease. I put that in there, because we haven't been looking at that, but real truthfully, you're right. It wouldn't, we wouldn't do the lease. It could be a bond issuance, or the, or a bond anticipation note that we would then, further down the road, issue the permanent bonds.
And is, is there restrictive money? Meaning it can always be spent on the apparatus in the library?
Well, because of this resolution, yes, there, there won't be any additional funding or anything else.
At this time, we'll call for a motion for approval.
I make a motion that the resolution to provide the preliminary authorization for the funding for Jasper County Fire and Rescue Pumpers, Trucks, and Capital Improvement For the Pratt Library.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Next, we have Mr. John Wall. Consideration of Resolution R-2024-05, Committing To Negotiate A Fee In Lieu Of Ad Valorem Taxes Agreements Between Jasper County And Project Install, Identifying The Project And Other Matters Related There Too. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council. John Wall, Better Foreman McNair Law Firm, representing Project Install. This is an indecent resolution to negotiate a fee in lieu of tax agreement for this company, Project Install. The company has committed to making an $11 million investment and 14 new jobs in the county. And so this is a first step, and required three readings to approve the fee in lieu of tax agreement. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council, Mr. Garbey, Ms. Clark, Pastor Atkins, Mr. Kemp? This is an existing company, a family-owned business in the south end of Jasper County. And it's reinvesting in the county and in their workers, and expansion that is going to create jobs and capital investment. And this is exactly what this council is pushing, is economic development, to create these type of opportunities where we have good-paying jobs that start at $24 an hour and go up to $72 an hour. These are the type things that we need to be doing to create opportunities for our citizens to stay here and have a good career and make a living and support their families and retire right here at home. So I want to thank you, John, and the family that owns this business for what they're doing, and know that they have our support.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, council.
At this time, we'll call for a motion for approval.
I make a motion that reconsider the resolution for committing to negotiating a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes agreement between Jasper County and Project Install.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we have Ms. Wagner. We do have a public hearing, but this is the second reading of consideration of ordinance 0-2024-02, to amend the official zoning map of Jasper County so as to transfer a property located at 951 Carolina Drive bearing Jasper County Tax Map Number 067-00-01-003, from the rural preservation zone to the industrial development zone on the Jasper County Official Zoning Map. Ms. Wagner.
Good evening, chairman and council members. This agenda item is a staff-initiated request for rezoning, to have a property designated as industrial development. The property is located at 951 Carolina Drive. It consists of 172 acres and is currently zoned rural preservation. The property is owned by Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority, and is known as their Cherry Point Reclamation Facility, where sewer is collected and treated in accordance with the Jasper County Zoning Ordinance. Collection of sewage is allowed in the rural preservation zoning district. However, treatment of sewage is not allowed in the rural preservation district. The facility was originally constructed around 1997, 1998, and therefore, it's considered a legal non-conformant use. Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority submitted a major site plan application to expand the Cherry Point Reclamation Facility in order to meet growth demands and projected development forecasts within their service area. During the site plan review, staff realized the property used as a legal non-conformant use. Jasper County's zoning ordinance states that legal non-conformities are uses structures, lots, or developed site improvements that do not conform to one or more provisions or requirements of the zoning ordinance, but were lawfully established prior to the effective date of the zoning ordinance. Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority could provide a business plan and ask the Planning Commission to approve their expansion, but the use would still be non-conformant. Staff believes it's in the best interest of Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority and Jasper County to have the property rezoned to industrial development, bringing the property using compliance with the Jasper County Zoning Ordinance.
And this is a reclamation facility?
A reclamation facility.
And Beaufort Jasper owns and operates it themselves?
Yeah. According to the 2018 plan, the Jasper County Comprehensive Plan, it's identified as being in an area that's urban transition area, which are areas that are pockets of unincorporated Jasper County that are partially or entirely surrounded by either the city of Harterville or the town of Ridgeland. In many instances, these areas were already developed. As the municipalities expanded, their municipal boundaries through annexation for areas that experienced new development or redevelopment within the urban transition zones, considerations should be given to working with the adjacent municipality for annexation. The adjacent parcels are zoned industrial development, general commercial, rural preservation, and the municipal limits of Harterville. Adjacent land uses are mix of both industrial and commercial uses. To the north, the planned development district through the city of Harterville, which includes a new residential subdivision. To the east is a commercial subdivision known as the Cherry Point Business Park. It contains a variety of general commercial uses. To the south are two concrete plants and a waste management facility and undeveloped forested property. And to the west, this undeveloped forested property. And access for the property is served by Carolina Drive and Jasper Station Road. Carolina Drive is a local road maintained by Jasper County. Jasper Station Road is a local road maintained by South Carolina DOT. The Planning Commission recommends approval of this application, and we have followed, we have notified the property owners for the public hearing tonight, posted the property with a sign, and put a notice in the newspaper. And I didn't receive any comments.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Any questions from council before we call for a motion?
Yeah.
At this time, yeah, we need to have a public hearing. At this time, I'll open the floor for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address council for this specific matter, this specific topic, please do so at this time. Public hearing going once, public hearing going twice. Public hearing is now closed, and at this time, I'll call for a motion for approval on the second reading.
So move that this be the second reading on the consideration of ordinance 0-2024-02, to amend the official zoning map of Jasper County so as to transfer a property located at 951 Carolina Drive.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, consideration of first reading of an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of Jasper County so as to transfer a property located at 8415 Speedway Boulevard bearing Jasper County Tax Map Number 039-00-01-026, from the community commercial zone to the industrial development zone on the Jasper County Official Zoning Map.
The applicant requests a zoning map amendment to have a property designated as industrial development. The subject property consists of 4.38 acres. It's located along Speedway Boulevard in Harterville. The property is currently zoned community commercial and was, and is developed as a self-storage facility. That development happened around 1994. The applicant would like to have the property rezoned to industrial development to complement the Riverport PDD with industrial uses and adjacent growth patterns within the Highway 17 corridor that includes industrial uses. According to the 2018 Jasper County Comprehensive Plan, the future land use map identifies this area as urban transition, which are pockets of unincorporated Jasper County that are partially or entirely surrounded by either the city of Harterville or the town of Ridgeland. Our Comprehensive Plan recommends annexation within these areas. Adjacent, the adjacent parcels are zoned community commercial, rural preservation, and the city limits of Harterville, which includes the Riverport PDD. Adjacent land uses are commercial, residential, vacant, and industrial uses within the Riverport PDD. Again, that's in the city of Harterville. And the property is accessed by Speedway Boulevard, which is a four-lane state-maintained highway classified as a major arterial road. The Comprehensive Plan does not support the designation of industrial development. The Planning Commission recommends denial of the request to have the property rezoned to industrial development zone.
Thank you.
Ms. Wagner, this, this property was before the Planning Commission?
Yes, sir.
And what was their recommendation?
They recommended denial.
Denial? Okay. Any questions from council? None?
No, we need to deny.
At this time, we'll call for a motion.
Call for motion to follow the Planning Commission requests.
To table.
To table.
We have a motion to table, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, I guess, Mr. Tettehew, you fill in for Mr. Ramona. Consideration of third reading of ordinance 0-2023-20, authorizing improving a loan from South Island Transportation Infrastructure Bank. And in a double general agreement between Jasper County, South Carolina, the city of Harterville, South Carolina, and SC Transportation Infrastructure Bank, and other matters related there, to exit three financing document.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. After many, many years, we're approaching the finish line in Harterville to put the financing in place for the exit project. The ordinance itself provides authority for the chairman and the council, county administrator to execute the documents that are included in the package. Some might have changed them, the dates, insertions, those types of things. And... dates, insertions, those types of things, and close the deal, if you will, with the state Transportation Infrastructure Bank, which in broad terms over the years committed to grant and loan fifty-eight million dollars, half each way. The county council, over the years, we have negotiated with Mr. Folgerman, I, and other council that we've had, have reduced the loan exposure for the county by using our transportation sales tax money to make a upfront contribution to get things going. We have capped, last year, we passed an ordinance, excuse me, yes, I think it was an ordinance, that reduced or increased the amount of money that we would put into under the loan or agreed to under loan from fourteen million to eighteen million, so we've capped that. We have separate agreements provided in this with the city and the developers as to backstops on any funding shortfalls. In short, we have taken every precaution that we could come up with to try and make certain that Jasper County citizens have a solid project and understand and have limits on their exposure for this project going forward. There are still some steps that have to be taken. There's some logistical matters about getting the intergovernmental agreement together between us and Hardyville as to how the funds are collected for the mid, which we've done that before, just, those are technical matters of orders. Still provides the authority with the counsel, the advice of other, our bond counsel in putting those together to put that in place, but this locks in what we get from STIB and authorizes us to continue moving forward. There have been no substantive changes in dollars or responsibilities since we had it at second reading, I guess a month ago approximately. Do the best to answer any questions that you might have about this.
Mr. Garbey, any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Counsel.
This is just a mirror of what Hardyville, Hardyville and us marry each other, right?
Yes.
Essentially.
Essentially.
Right. We both need to be, we're partners.
They, they, I think they took their action last week if we called their agenda right. We're following up and marrying up with them now in point of time so it all comes together.
Okay. Thank you.
At this time, we'll call for a motion for approval, please.
I call for a motion that this be the consideration of the third reading of ordinance zero dash twenty twenty-three dash twenty, authorizing and approving loan from South Carolina Transportation Infrastructure Bank and intergovernmental agreement among Jasper County, South Carolina, the city of Hardyville, South Carolina, Transportation Infrastructure Bank, and other related matters. Exit three finance document.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we have Mr. John Wall. Consideration of first reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of abhorrent taxes and incentive agreement by and between Jasper County and Project Install. Welcome back.
Thank you. This is the same project, Project Install, the same eleven million dollar capital investment, fourteen new jobs. This is the first of three readings and authorizes the chair and the county administrator to enter into this fee in lieu of tax agreement with Project Install and then create the multi-county industrial park with Hampton County if approved.
Thank you. Any questions?
No questions.
Hearing none. I'll call for a motion for approval, please.
I'd like to make a motion to have consideration on the ordinance authorizing extension and delivery of fee in lieu of taxes for Project Install.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. At this time, we have open floor. I've got a few people that have signed in. We're limited to three minutes, please. And Ms. Wanda, you run in the clock, or is that Lisa? Or Danny, one of you. Okay. First, we have Mr. Tony Gaston, Cusahatchee Community Center. Welcome, Mr. Gaston. How are you?
I'm well.
Good.
Mr. Counsel, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm pleased to, I was pleased to see the article in the newspaper about the Jasper saw airport upgrades and infrastructure improvements in twenty twenty-three, and other projects are ahead, as said, okay? However, nothing was mentioned with regard to replacing the historic building that was the community center in Cusahatchee. Our members of the community have provided input to county employees about what requirements the community has for a new community center. We request a meeting with the county council members to identify the funding line and the budgeted, and the budget for the new Cusahatchee Community Center. It has been more than a year since this historic building has been demolished, okay? Resources are available in the current state and national budgets, and it would be unfortunate for Jasper County to miss this opportunity to serve the citizens of the northern section of the county. Recreation is important to a community. It brings balance to our lives and is an important component of human condition for health and well-being. So we request that expedite the construction process to bring the service level for the northern sector of Jasper County to a satisfactory level.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And Ms. Frazier.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Salz and county council members. The Cusahatchee Community Center Group would like to bring to your attention that it has been a year since our community center was torn down because you reported that the building was unsafe because it was contaminated with mold and asbestos. There is still debris on the property, and it may be contaminated and even hazardous to our health. We would like the county to remove the debris out of our community as soon as possible. We would also like for the county council to have a meeting with us to discuss this matter and to let us know the date and time that the debris will be removed and what safety precautions that we may have to take. It is our prayer that we work together for the safety of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Michelle Gaston, Beaufort Jasper Housing Trust. Welcome, Ms. Gaston.
Good to see you. Good to see you, too. Chairman Salz, good evening, council members. My name is Michelle Gaston. I am the Jasper County representative on the Beaufort Jasper Housing Trust Fund, and I'm also the treasurer of the board. And I wanted to come to provide you with the status report of the activities that the board has undertaken in the last ninety days or so. We currently have a little more than four million dollars in the bank that we're working with in order to implement our priorities. And our priorities, or the priorities of the board are to create rental housing units, to fund homeownership opportunities later down the road, to actually look at repairs of existing units, and possibly delve into land acquisition. To meet those goals, there's actually an active request for proposal that's on the street right now that was issued on January thirtieth to provide one point one million dollars, and the goal is to actually create approximately a hundred and thirty rental units. There, there's been a wide distribution of the RFP. We want as many stakeholders, developers, as possible to come out and to actually submit their paperwork for consideration. The RFP is active until five o'clock on March seventh, and after that, the applications will be rated, ranked, and scored, and then the board will vote and make a decision regarding the winners of this particular portion of the funding. Later on in the summer, possibly the July, August timeframe, there'll be a second RFP that will be issued. Then during the spring of twenty twenty-five, the third RFP will be issued. Right now, we have, as I said, over four million dollars to work with. It's our hope that we'll receive more funding during the year in order to be able to address more of the affordable, attainable, and workforce housing needs in the participating jurisdictions. And for everyone's recollection, those jurisdictions are Jasper County, Beaufort County, the city of Beaufort, Bluffton, Hilton Head, excuse me, Port Royal, Yamasee. I will come, I'll request permission to come back and make a more formal presentation and to spend more time talking about the various components of what the board is actually trying to do at a later time. But the RFP information has been provided to the council members. If you need another copy of that, then I'm happy to provide that. The board chair would also like to come to Jasper County to talk about the county's priorities and needs. He has gone to the seven participating jurisdictions already to find out what their housing needs are, and what I'd like for Jasper County to do is to be at the table. Right now, we have the four million dollars or so that we're working with, but if Jasper County doesn't make its priorities known, then the other seven jurisdictions will have the first bite pretty much at the apple, and their priorities will be addressed.
We're gonna get a bite of that apple, I can promise you.
I hope so.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. And Mr. Folgerman will follow up to make sure we're getting her the information she needs, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is it Sandra?
Sandy.
Sandy, okay. And Sandy actually-
Sorry, my handwriting's terrible. I'm not gonna say that. I'm Sandy Vito. I'm on the, trustee on the library, Jasper County and AHJ Libraries. So I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman and council members, for your investment into the Pratt Memorial Renovations.
We're excited about that.
We're very excited about it. I can speak on behalf of all of our trustees, but also the ten thousand people who visit every year, the Pratt Memorial. So we really just stand here before you to thank you for the investment, let you know that we're engaging in strategic planning process to become an even greater presence in the community, and we think that the investment that you're making will preserve the historic importance of the building, but also allow us to expand services. So thank you so much for that investment.
Thank you. We're looking forward to it. It's gonna be special. Okay. Next, we have the administrative's report. Mr. Folgerman.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I'll keep it brief for you. I had an item on here about meetings because at the time, the county council was trying to establish the schedule for their meetings. Just to put it out there in public, you have a joint meeting scheduled with the town of Ridgeland and the city of Hardyville on Thursday, the twenty-second, in this room at one P.M. and you have decided to cancel the February twentieth previously mentioned county council meeting. So your next regularly scheduled meeting will be on March the fourth, Monday, March the fourth. So if everybody's on the same page with that, now that staff knows, council knows, and now the public knows. And the other item I wanted to bring up that wasn't on my report was Ms. Heather Rath with Heather Rath Consulting to give you a brief update of where we stand with the opioid litigation settlement funds, Jasper County's plan to use those funds. And Ms. Rath, as you know, has been working with community stakeholders to develop this plan and to implement the strategy to recover the settlement funds, to put those to use to implement the plan. You have it, Lisa? Great. Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Rath.
Thank you, Chairman, and I'm going to keep on my jacket because I'm freezing in here. I hope that's okay. Well, she pulls that up. I just wanted to remind everybody that the team that helped kind of lead this effort was Nicole Smith from New Life Center and Tanisha Riley from the coroner's office, Chief Wells, and myself. So that's kind of the team. What I'm gonna present to you all today is information that you've seen before, but it's a little bit more detail-oriented now that we've been able to meet with a lot of community members. We've been able to meet with folks in our community that have been directly affected by the opioid crisis. We've been able to meet with educators, and I wanted to give you all a real granular view of how we're going to move forward with these settlement dollars, okay? Thank you. All right. So let's talk about our total budget amount that we have available and what our request is. Currently, Jasper County has allocated, has two hundred, a little over two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars allocated through the opioid settlement funds at the state level. And what we can do is four times a year, we can draw down on these funds, and so we are in the first process of drawing down. We're looking at two programs, and again, these are previously approved by you all. We're looking at a media education campaign, and we're calling it Jasper County Unites Against Opioids, and that is a hundred and ten thousand dollar drawdown. And then we're looking at the OD MAP tracking with New Life Center managing that process, and that is sixty-two thousand dollars. So our total ask is a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars that we have submitted to the opioid recovery fund. So let's talk about our first strategy, which is the media op, I'm sorry, media education campaign. Again, this is under the guise of Jasper County Unites Against Opioids, and we have three distinct campaigns that I will go over with you tonight. The first campaign is a one pill can kill hyper-local message. So if you've looked at the one pill can kill, this is a very important national message that has been out there, and our objective with this is to really drill that down to communities within our county. And we want to raise awareness about the dangers of opioid misuse, and we're gonna do this again through a very hyper-local neighborhood-style media campaign. Next slide. Our campaign tactics on that, on this include community workshops, localized signage, neighborhood ambassadors, and radio and TV messaging, and then again, we have strategies and tactics under each of those. Next one. Our next strategy in Jasper County Unites Against Opioids is utilizing families of local Jasper residents who have lost their children and family, family members to the opioid crisis. Our campaign tactics on this are personalized stories in local media, community support groups, and town hall meetings with the tactics attached to those as well. And our third strategy in the media education campaign is general targeted outreach to various cohort groups. We went ahead and identified three cohort groups that we would like to target. First is pregnant mothers, second is church and community of churches, and then the last is seniors in high school. And how are we going to evaluate how we do with our, how, how well we do with this project? We're going to be initiating surveys and feedback, media reach, and measuring our media incident reports and attendance measurement. So I want to stop right here, and I want to look at success criteria because we established these success criterias with real data in mind. And so we want to see a reduction in opioid incidence, and we're looking at meeting or exceeding the set target of twenty percent. We want to increase awareness and knowledge, and we want to see a thirty percent or higher increase in community-wide awareness of the one pill can kill media campaign. We want to see enhanced community engagement with a twenty-five percent or higher increase in community participation in workshops, town hall meetings, and support groups. And then we want to really measure that effective media reach. We want to reach at least eighty percent of the Jasper County population in the hyper-local media campaign. Next, I want to move on to the second program, and that is collaboration with New Life Center on OD MAP. Again, you all have been briefed on this before, but OD MAP is the gold standard for receiving federal and state funds, and our OD MAP could use some management in terms of all of the organizations being able to feed into one source, and that source that we have identified is positioned with New Life Center. So our objective is that New Life Center will feed the OD MAP for our entire county, incorporating all data points obtained from key stakeholders, including Jasper County Fire Rescue, EMS, the coroner's office, the sheriff's office, the detention center, Ridgeland Police and Fire, Hardyville Police and Fire, the Department of Social Services, and Coastal Carolina Medical Center, and probably a few others. Our evaluation metrics on this, we will be data, inputting the data to pinpoint overdose incidents. We will be able to track and identify statistics, break down these statistics by age, gender, and substances involved, identify trends and overdose hotspots, and hopefully be able to get ahead of those hotspots and those trends, and then, of course, share the data with all of our stakeholders as well as internally so that we can make some good prescribed decisions. And success criteria for this, it will be balanced between community outreach and analysis. And really, the bottom line on this is to use this information for policy changes and to allocate resources effectively and to garner additional resources if necessary. So let's talk about next steps in the process. We have submitted our request with all documentation, letters of intent, budgets, support items to the state of South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund. I will work, work with Roberta, the administrator of the fund, for additional documentation needed for the two programs. Again, those two programs are education and media campaign, and then the tracking of OD MAP. I'll work with her throughout this month. Then we will make adjustments to the plan in advance at the March meeting. In, on March twentieth, the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund Board will meet, and they will evaluate our plan and recommend to approve or not approve. The board also may recommend one program but not the other, so we have several abilities in there. And then, once approved, we will issue an RFP, working with the procurement team at Jasper County to find the team to lead the education and media campaign. to find the team to lead the education and media campaign.
Any questions, Mr. Council?
No, thank you.
Pastor Atkins?
Very good plans.
Okay.
Got a lot of work cut out for you there, but it's a great cause, and I'm glad we have the funds to do that because it's a major crisis all over, not just here, so.
Absolutely, and I want to remind you, Chairman, that we will be receiving these dollars in different allocations over the next 18 years. This is just the beginning. Thank you all so much. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for indulging me. I thought it was important to get in front of you. As Heather said, I think she made her first request, was it today, Heather? Deadline, okay. So we're excited about getting that plan implemented, and I think she's done a great job with all the community stakeholders. That concludes my reporting case unless, of course, any of you have any questions of me.
No questions.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
We'll move on to our consent agenda. I guess this is Mr. Tetter. Mr. Ryan's not with us.
We actually, when we set up the agenda, the first part was the approval of all the consent.
Right, this is on the consent.
Except for Mr. Kep, removed, which are my team members.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember comments. Mr. Garvate, any comments? Ms. Clark? Pastor Atkins?
Yeah, I want to give thanks to God, who is ahead of my life. And also, I want to say to the people of Logan Lane, you're gonna soon have a sidewalk coming down at Logan Lane Street. I thank God for placing in my mind, one day I went to the administrator. My administrator asked me if he could find some money because we have a county park down there, and these kids walking down there all the time. And I felt like somebody was gonna be killed sooner or later. And we really needed a sidewalk down there. And he found the money and got the dentists. And I thank dentists for not leaving me out. And he let Congressman Kemp know to a meeting to let me know that the sidewalk at Logan Street is out for three bid. So I want people to know that I ain't just sitting there. I'm working, you know, trying to get something done in the county. You know, and that was my goal from the beginning, and that's been my goal till the end. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Pastor Atkins. Mr. Councilman Kep?
Yes, I attended the slavery and human trafficking symposium last month, and it was very enlightening. We had 469 cases in this county alone. And the one thing that shocked me was, most people get into this position by kin. Their family sells them. Yeah, I mean, this is, it was a shock. But I have to say that when they asked our sheriff, the sheriff department, about what they should do and what they were doing, they got a attaboy from the, from the trafficking people from the state, saying that you knew what to do. So I want to say that the sheriff department is doing what they can. I met with people from the library, and they were happy. I think when Ms. Vito said they were anxious, I think she was understating what that meant. She was anxious. I mean, if they don't see something happening every day, they get antsy. And I told them that the county is not the one that's gonna delay anything. It's gonna be something beyond our control. That's it. And just last Democratic vote, 3% of the entire state voted. 5% in Jasper County. You gotta do better. Democrats, Republicans, whatever, we gotta get out there and vote. A lot of people died for this. A lot of people worked for it. I'm saying that the board of elections needs people. So if you have a chance, get out there and do it. It's not too bad now because of the low turnout. But come 2024, I think there's gonna be a large turnout, and we're gonna need people. And if you don't decide to change or get into the business of government by volunteering, which is not a volunteer, you get $160 for the whole process, you gotta do it. And the last thing is a Black History Month. I want to recognize that and make sure that, on Facebook, you see a lot about history. I'm learning a lot. I always believe in history, no matter what it is. History is history, and you always find a little nugget, a little gem that will make you feel good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kep. I want to thank everyone for joining us this evening. Appreciate you taking time to be here. A lot of good things happening, as you've heard tonight. We've got a lot of challenges, especially with our infrastructure as it relates to our roads in particular. I'm glad to see Beaufort Jasper doing an investment on their reclamation center that we approved for the zoning change. A lot of good things happening in the county, but there's a lot of things that we need help with. And we appreciate those who step up to volunteer, like Mr. Smitty Cooler and his group. Appreciate what y'all are doing. There's a lot of, a lot of challenges, but together, if we work together as a community, we can make good things happen and make this a better place for everyone to live. So thank you for being with us. And at this time, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a second. All in favor, stand up. Y'all have a good night.